Let's see. We call this meeting to order. It's the Advertising and Promotion Commission for Holiday Island, August fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, at six P. O. Good stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Elwood.
Here.
Chairman Holland.
Here.
Vice Chair Lawler.
Here.
Secretary of Treasury Lottawitz.
Here.
Commissioner Plumley.
Here.
Commissioner Scruggins.
Here.
Mr. Chair, everyone is here.
All right, we have a quorum present. Proceed with the meeting. Moving on to the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
No motion.
I'll second.
I second.
I have a comment. I know, I think I mentioned this already, as far as my absence at our last meeting, we don't have either excuse absence or absence. It's just we're not that right. But I think so. I'll excuse this, that's it.
We put excuse then. We changed it to excuse.
Good, thank you.
We have a first and a second to approve the agenda. Secretary, you want to vote? Vote by roll call?
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Elwood.
Aye. This is gonna be tough tonight, actually.
Chairman Holland.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawler.
Aye.
Secretary of Treasury Lottawitz.
Here.
Commissioner Plumley.
Aye.
Commissioner Scruggins.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, everyone is here.
Oh, everybody voted aye. Not here. The agenda was approved.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I was gonna say that. Well, where did you?
It was a vote by roll call for the agenda. You will correct that one in there.
Yes.
Going on down to the minutes, we've got minutes from the regular meeting July one, the workshop July fifteenth, and the special meeting on July fifteenth. Are there any corrections?
That's true.
You make it on motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
He's gonna second it. Go ahead and do a vote by roll call.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Elwood.
I'm abstaining because I wasn't. Not that they're wrong.
Chairman Holland.
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawler.
Aye.
Secretary of Treasury Lottawitz.
Aye.
Commissioner Plumley.
Aye.
Commissioner Scruggins.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, everything approved.
Minutes are approved as presented. Moving on to reports. We'll begin with the financial report. Secretary of Treasury, if you could give us a report on the financials.
The report remains the same as July. Nothing has been spent since then. We started out with nine thousand dollars. Last month, we spent sixty-one for the post office box, leading a revenue of eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine.
Okay. Are there any questions on the financial report? If there's not any question on that, then we'll move on to the HiPro donation on the website, Visit Holiday Island. That's now in our possession. The site is getting developed right now, and was hoping that we would look at it tonight. We still have a technology barrier with the TV up here that we're not displaying anything yet. Hopefully, in the next meeting, we'll display it. So, right now, we started the streaming, but that's as far as we've gotten. We do have the phone number, but HiPro also has donated. We have not turned anything on with that yet, not doing anything with it, so.
So, when someone calls in, you tell them, somebody maybe on our committee, asks the phone, or searches for him, you try to give him information like the chamber does, like this committee.
It would be, and I think what will eventually be brought up is moving that to some type of digital part. It's the phone number that HiPro used in all the advertising in the past. That phone number has been out, and it's still out on advertising for years.
Matter of fact.
Yep. So, I think we've got to figure out what to do with that phone at some point and do something with it.
The reason I bring this up is for the audience to know, many of you have been here all meetings, but just so you see what HiPro did for many years and the good job they did. So, they're transferring some of those services over to this committee so we can continue to get people here and promote business and so forth, and short-term rentals and Holiday Island. They did a good job. And Alvin was answering it. He was really good spokesman for Holiday Island.
Any other questions on the website or the phone?
When will that take place then?
The website. The website is almost ready to go. We're probably within two, two and a half weeks.
And who is gonna be with us?
Well, we've got it in a way right now. I'm building it right now, but then it's gonna be the way that we can maintain it. So, it's in a content management system that we can update. The chamber also uses the same software, so we'll see. We'll keep it updated.
So, if I'm in Waterloo, Iowa, and I want to come here and visit, and I come up with, I say, I'd like to visit Holiday Island, Arkansas, where will that go? Where will my query go?
Well, we'll have to work on some of the search engine stuff at some point coming up here. There wasn't very much done with it. There was the website, pretty static in content, so it's something I'll be looking at.
Will someone go to HiCity, the HiCity website?
I'm sure someone would go to HiCity and search Holiday Island.
Are there any Realtors that serve, like whatever Realtor it is? Do they, would you have to go on Realtor dot com or do you want to ticket more information? I'm in Waterloo, and I want, I think I want to buy a vacation home, and I heard about this Holiday Island, so I typed in Holiday Island, Arkansas. I'm wondering where ours is gonna be in relation to others.
That all depends on the search engine and what comes out of it. So, I mean, the site itself is all geared towards tourism, getting people here, listening to the Airbnb. The Airbnbs have all mostly emailed back a direct link that we'll put up there for booking of the Airbnbs here in Holiday Island. Some of the hiking trails, this is being worked on, but it lives up there. No, there's a full listing of hiking trails here at this point.
I will guarantee you, if three different people typed in those words, they would come up in different orders.
Yeah, it is.
It's just the way search engines work. Unless you want to register some specific words, it's gonna work that way if you want to.
Yeah.
Everybody that has a business license will also be on there.
Yeah.
I noticed that Eureka pays quite a bit of money for their plan and how they do the Eureka Spring story, Arkansas, or that kind of whatever it is. They get like eight hundred thousand visits a year, but in the future, after whoever passes, are we going to go with some company like that? And I would not believe that.
I would expect that we would start looking at what to send out and what to put out for work to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on website or phone? If not, we'll move over to the public meeting report. Michelle, would I let you take that? Because I think you've got lots of dates.
Nothing's changed, probably.
Nothing's been added to it. Nothing's been changed. We were talking about it at the last meeting, but since you weren't here, we paused and waited until now, so.
Yeah, no, I haven't changed anything, and they're all on the calendar for the, either with Janice or Lauren, depending on which site we have, so we're all good to go. I don't know if last time we discussed a speaker, or we, why not do that anymore, or?
Well, actually, both y'all were out, so we didn't cover any part of this, so that's why we're having that back in here again today.
I had mentioned in previous meetings about asking a certain person that was very good at this, and we all know him, and he declined because of a lot of the situations in his life, so we're back to how many of us would be there at these presentations that are here on this list. I kept mentioning that the city was formed, and we had a pavilion. Another thing comes up in that regard, and that is the rental of the pavilion. We've had several things come up, and Chairman Larry is here tonight, Randy, in terms of renting the facilities of Holiday Island, and what an organization does to contribute to Holiday Island, and then to get rental of facilities free, mainly HiHo, Hospitality Association, Trenzo Barn, and so forth. So, we, so we need to decide on two things. One, are we gonna spend some money on that for rental, rent the pavilion or the ballroom? And number two, who's gonna speak? Are we gonna have all seven of us there? Are we gonna have two of us there? Are some of us gonna do some and some of the others? And this may be covered later on.
I've already put down, when I, when I reserve these locations, the sponsors that have agreed to sponsor it, and I don't think any of that's changed. I think really all we need to do is talk about which, we're gonna have one of us do it, which one of us wants to do it, and kind of get some kind of consensus. We don't want to have, we don't want to have four different meetings and four different messages. They gotta have to be pretty darned close to the same, and then we have to worry about more than one of us operating at the same time.
There was a thought of maybe I reading a four or five-minute overview, and then Bryce field all the questions, and then everyone else is there, you know, to show solidarity, and that way, we would keep everything the same. It's like speech would be a prepared speech based on those questions that we all.
If you need a backup in case, you just say, I can't read, not particularly what I'm.
Good.
We spent quite a bit of time on frequently asked questions. Everybody said that in the packing, and wouldn't always be the talking points that they go forward with.
Right, that's what we're thinking, and I'll bring that to the next meeting to share and get anything changed.
As far as, it's way different than when we became a city. I mean, I like that, but I don't have a problem with that Peggy reading a prepared thing, and Bryce actually runs. But some of the residents would be there, and I think in an open meeting, I don't know that it's necessarily a violation of anything for some of us to interject.
So, either, I mean, we get interpretation of that too.
I mean, I don't, I don't know, but I don't, that's not like.
I keep going back to the way the city did.
I hate to just go and just sit there and eat my mouth set. I don't do that very well.
I go back to the way the city did it four years ago or more, or whatever, and most of the committee were there at the pavilion. I'm thinking about the pavilion, because I saw three neighbors of mine change their mind about them for the city because of that meeting at the pavilion.
Oh, yeah, but they didn't have to work that for you.
But it was very informal that they got up, and there were several members, maybe all of the committee members, although we had a bigger committee back then, but it wasn't graphics and a lot of handouts. Here's a question. We want to become a city. Here's the money you're missing because you're not collecting this turnback money and so forth. And then the vote was held and it passed quite narrowly, but I think the committee did a good job of consenting, and then people would make up their minds.
The issue, the difference that we have between the city forming and us is that we're actually a committee now. When the city was forming, they weren't any part of anything, and they didn't have the issue of the open meeting, recording it or doing any of that. We have some of that now.
We pretty much have to stay with Peggy reading a thing, and then, but we're still members of the audience, so I don't think that's a violation of the way of by, say, Bryce.
We do know that it still has to be recorded for the meeting, and that still has to be brought as a meeting itself, but.
I think that's, I think that's fine.
Well, let's take, look, the first one is, see, I don't remember.
September nineteenth.
Yeah, okay, so it's coming up fairly quickly. So, wouldn't we have to decide tonight how it's gonna work?
We'll actually probably come back and do a workshop just for this one item, and only for this one item.
I mean, really, all we need to do is have Peggy put together her, air, three or four or five-minute speech, and you can send it out to everybody, and we can make comments. I mean, I don't mind having a workshop, but.
Well, we still have one more regular meeting before the first, the first meeting, so we did them.
I think we need to do a regular meeting if she put together her anticipated, but you can't put together yours because you're gonna be answering questions. And I think I know what most of them will be, but we can't, can't do it in advance.
Let's, let's do that. We'll add it to next, next, to the next meeting, and we'll cover it at that point in time and come up with everything, but it's gonna be a meeting.
I wanted to put it in, it probably be really, really informal, because I know when we did the city, it was not that many, maybe fifteen, twenty people showed up, as I recall. Really pretty informal, which was great, because some of us in the audience could answer a question of somebody we knew. Doesn't have to be, you know, but okay, I've spoken out.
All right. Any other comments? I will move on to business. We have old business first. Secretary, we read the title, and then we'll discuss the report.
Resolution, HIAPC R twenty-four dash oh one four, a resolution authorizing the Holiday Island Advertising and Promotion Commission establishing a policy for grant funding for events.
And the only reason we're covering this in the old business, we don't have any real motion to take. We've already made the motion, agreed to it. We've gone and signed it. This is only the wording that came back from legal on changing the part. Oh, you wanted to change in there, that you had questions about. That's page nine of eleven.
Nine of eleven.
And five of eleven. We're two different places. Five of eleven is the first one. Nine of eleven was the signature for it, and the green highlighted is what was changed.
Oh, okay. That's not highlighted.
Yeah, number five, on page five.
Yeah.
I think, Mr. Chairman, you might explain to the audience what we made. We've got sixty-nine pages here tonight, sixty-nine, and there are minutes, and there are other things, and when they say page nineteen or whatever, I don't know if we can, I guess we can't get it up on the screen, but we've got a lot of paper. It's just like when the city was formed, to go through, and that's what we're talking about.
How much of that?
Does that solve the question that you had in the original motion to approve it?
In my opinion, it does.
Got it. There's not any motion to go change. It's just kind of note line what's there.
You can vote and stop it.
Yeah.
Or you can.
Any other questions about that old business, just on the updates part?
No.
Move on from that one, then. We'll go on to the new business. The next item on the new business, Secretary, would you read the title?
Resolution, HIAPC R twenty-four dash oh one eight, a resolution for the Holiday Island Advertising and Promotion Commission establishing an online meeting public commenting policy.
Any comments?
I had a question this morning. I read it, and I'll be darned about it. I remember what that was. Basically, not really.
This came from the part of Airbnb owners not living here and not being able to attend the meetings of the AMP commission, and so this is giving a way to have a policy to take questions or comments online that we're streaming them tonight, and allows them to participate where they wouldn't be able to.
Do we have any?
We do have some right now. There are currently.
On this, on this subject?
As far as streaming online right now?
Well, as far as, it would be relevant to what we're talking about.
This is giving them the opportunity to speak and the, how they would do it. So, please, give us a limitation to it. You want to have us read that?
No, not this, no, I just wondered if there was anybody streaming that had a question about what we're talking about right now.
Their questions do come at the end of the agenda there with public comments and questions, so there is a time for it in there. Are you saying you want to extend that out to other times, or you want to leave it?
No, I just, if there was something relevant that we should discuss before we go further with this one, but if they're not, I mean, I don't mind waiting till the comments at the end, but this will already be passed by the time we get to the comments at the end.
It will. This is, this is one of those that we're putting it in place so that we can have the comments there. I know that there's that issue there. The problem we have right now is we don't have extra people to sit here and watch to report back the information that's done online, and that's why we only give it a short window of time in there to allow comments from. If we had some other staff part for that, we would be able to do it, but not having the, the IT department or anything.
I'd like to ask a question. One of the city council members up here, they're probably gonna answer. At per city councilman meetings, do you have a way, if I'm in Maryville and I want to ask a question, do you, could I type in my question, what about blah, 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 and do you answer that? Okay, yes, I think we have, no. So, where do I do that? I'm in Maryville, Fort Smith, and I want to ask a question, and I own three short-term rentals, and I want to, do I put them on your computer and say, what about this?
It would come through a streaming platform, which is YouTube right now. We're using YouTube to stream, and it would come through that platform.
And the minute agenda at the top, it has the YouTube channel so people can log in.
I'm wondering, and I'm for all, all for technology, but Mr. Larry and the city council, I don't think we have that happening now with the board of commissioners or the city council.
Can I chime in?
Sure.
Did you say your name?
Yeah, Linda Gray, twenty-nine Table Rock Drive. And it's not needed for the city, might be needed for HiCity, but it's not needed for the city. The city serves the people who reside here. We don't serve people who just own property here. That's the difference between the city and HiCity, actually, or even maybe the AMP commission, but the city passes laws that affect residents, not people that live elsewhere. So, I mean, no city really has a method of taking comments, I don't think, for people that don't live here.
Not in a standard city format.
But, Mr. Chairman, the city doesn't do it. We're a committee of the city. Why are we doing it?
Well, we have qualifying businesses that don't reside here, so I think that their, their input in this part of it seems like it would be valid at that point. They do have a business that this, this committee, if the tax passed in November, we would tax them, even though they don't live here.
Wasn't there a mileage circumference around Holiday Island?
That's verminous, that was verminous and upheaval.
Verminous. I've talked to people in Florida that have houses here, Kansas, Oklahoma, Texas, Nebraska, all over, so.
You're getting confused. Your city council and licensing businesses are somebody within a certain radius of different spots. That doesn't mean the elders.
Yeah, okay, I guess, so are you saying that the technology that we have in front of you right there at our next meeting, if I'm in Calhoun, Oklahoma, and I own a rental here, a short-term rental, I can call in, and I can say, Mr. Chairman, I have a question about blah, 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 and you're gonna look at it, and you're gonna stay here and public comment. Mr. Brown has a commission, a question about blah, 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 and we're gonna talk about it now?
That's, that's correct, when we get a public comment on.
That's what this is for.
That's correct, and if this passes, then we would have, at the end of this, we would have an opportunity to public it all.
And how much do we, do we have to vote on that comment for Mr. Brown makes from Calhoun, or what? Do we, do we just listen to him?
It's a comment or question. It's mostly gonna be a question in that format, questions they have that they're dealing with. So, there is not a back, back and forth discussion. It's just a single question.
And if we pass it tonight, we're sure that the next meeting, this will work.
It will work at this meeting if we pass it today. It will work at this meeting if we pass it today. All right.
Can I also make another comment based upon what you just said?
Yeah.
Um, let me go over this again. You might want a disclaimer in there that if the technology is not working, that you're not responsible to take questions.
That's correct. I think there is actually one in here. Let me look real quick though.
Oh, C, but that's not exactly what she was talking about.
Uh, section six. Six A would pretty much get us to that point. Well, in some way. I mean, obviously the technology is, is a part that we could add to that. We could add a C inside of that, uh, section six and, uh, allow that if technology was not working. And I'm sure at some point we may have a meeting that, uh, we don't have internet here and we can't stream that night.
It will happen.
It will happen.
Do you want, do you want to add it to six or just want to add it to three C? Just kind of either one. Maybe limited in company, maybe turned off the full for all questions, or, you know, just add another...
Do you want to add D in that section?
Or add it to C, we're not responsible for any...
What does that it as a D as an extra as a part?
I don't, but just a suggestion.
Could you, please tell me how you want to read it so we can put it into the minutes into the resolution?
Let me think. It becomes a period. How we want to word that?
Our function is all plays and pays.
We're something that, that, uh, we're not respe- responsible for, uh...
Guarantee, guarantee the phrase? Cannot guarantee the ability to take comments.
There you go. Add that and then I'll make a motion.
Then we give just some examples? Internet outage, computer outage?
Why, but I think it's fine.
Got it.
Cannot guarantee ability to take comments.
Take comments.
Set comments.
And then do I have time for me to make a motion?
Uh, anything else in there? And then I would say, uh, definitely make a motion.
All the comments, I make a motion if we pass R twenty-four zero one.
Section three D is what I was doing.
As amended, as amended.
As amended with section three D.
I'll second it if you have another question.
We have a first and a second. Go ahead.
If the person calls in from anywhere, anywhere, and they want to discuss something, we don't really have to discuss that or make a motion or do anything. No action items on that call.
It is a public comment time, so it is not a point where we're making action. It's really more of a question or comment that they're giving at the point.
That they would give if they were here at the podium.
All right, so we have a, a motion and a second. Uh, Secretary, you want to take a roll, roll vote?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Elwood?
Yes, aye.
Chairman Holland?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawler?
Aye.
Secretary Treasurer Lidois, aye. Commissioner Plumley?
Aye.
Commissioner Straggs?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a favor.
Right. So, uh, R twenty-four dash zero-one-eight, uh, approved. So that, the only thing I want to add to that is that we'll have that public comment tonight. And if anybody was wondering at this point in time, there were, there were nine watching while we were talking about that. There are currently seven watching right now, so...
Can I make a motion that we read R twenty-four zero one-nine? Open for discussion based on title?
Um, I would, I would create one of R twenty-one dash zero-one-nine. Uh, but we'll have the secretary read the title and then we'll proceed from there. I don't know if there's a motion to put through. So, Secretary, if you want to read the next business, line item.
Resolution HIAPC R twenty-four dash oh-one-nine. A resolution amending the location and scheduled time of the Holiday Island City Advertising and Promotion Commission meetings.
You had a comment?
No.
No? Then you're gonna make a motion and go read it?
I'll make a motion that we pass resolution R twenty-four zero one.
We have a motion. And I'll... All right. Secretary, if you want to do a roll, roll vote?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Elwood?
Aye.
Chairman Holland?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawler?
Aye.
Secretary Treasurer Lidois, aye. Commissioner Plumley?
Aye.
Commissioner Straggs?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, a hundred percent said yes.
All right. Uh, R twenty-four dash zero-one-nine will be added.
We were changing it to six o'clock on Monday, so...
The, the repeal part actually showed the wrong date somehow. It showed Thursday and we've never talked about Thursday, so... Moving on to, uh, R twenty-four dash zero-one-six. Secretary, if you will read the title.
Resolution HIAPC R twenty-four dash oh-one-six. A resolution authorizing expense reimbursement policy for the Holiday Island City Advertising and Promotion Commission.
Any discussion or questions?
Should we put a... Should we put a dollar limit on that?
I believe that dollar limit is going to come into the, really the next line and we can extend them. Zero-one-seven, which is the authorized spending funds, which has a maximum amount. And we can extend that to be the maximum props aboard or in some way with approval of it. I would say the board would fit that.
I think they'd have to come back to the AP if they had something above that. Do we need to put that?
I think sixteen is just saying that there's an option to reimburse.
There is a reimbursement policy. Seventeen is gonna dictate the amount.
I appreciate, uh, Pat Elwood's comment on that because another group that I'm in, I think that has been not followed. And there were taxpayers' money that was expended over the amount that should have been. And I would like to see this as a maximum, uh, for purposes.
This, uh, sixteen just gives us pretty much the form and the action that takes place once that is turned down. And what happens is that we keep records, the proper records of what is reimbursed. And then seventeen will cover the amounts. Any other questions?
I, I think I, I just, when I'm looking through this, I just wondered if we shouldn't reference the limit and is subject to the limit. But then we haven't passed oh-seventeen yet.
That's true. If we pass this one and did not pass the next one, then there would be no technical limit there.
We're doing it backwards, but we should do them together maybe because I... I, it probably, it's a moot point, as it turns out, but I don't want anybody to misconstrue that they could just...
Do you want to do a motion to table this one and then bring it back from the table after?
Fix it, can't we? I'm just, I'm just worried about, I'm not so sure they shouldn't be together or at least one reference the other.
We can do that. But we can't reference from sixteen to seventeen because seventeen hasn't passed yet.
Well, can we table this and vote on seventeen?
That would be the motion.
Back to sixteen? And then in sixteen, we can put the subject to the limitations of seventeen. I, I know it's a small...
You can make a motion to, to table it for now and then you can make a motion to bring it back to the table.
Table it for now, but not for the entire night.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
I'll make a motion that we, we look at cutting board one-seven first.
I'll second that.
Let's do that.
I get where you're going with that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Sometimes my brain is not working fast enough.
We have to vote on table?
We do. Um, we do have to vote on table on that.
I would have made a motion that we table it.
Yeah, I second this.
My man firsted.
No, he seconded. I seconded it, he firsted.
Okay. He did this, okay.
Yeah, go ahead, deal with it.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Elwood?
Aye.
Chairman Holland?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawler?
Aye.
Secretary Treasurer Lidois, aye. Commissioner Plumley?
Aye.
Commissioner Straggs?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, a hundred percent.
All right, we'll table that one and move on to R twenty-four dash zero-one-seven. Secretary, if you want to read the title of this one?
Resolution HIAPC R twenty-four dash oh-one-seven. Resolution authorizing the chairman of the Holiday Island Advertising and Promotion Commission to expend funds up to without prior approval. And that amount is three hundred dollars.
And I would add to this that since I only put myself in that, I would expand that also to, uh, other members of the commission at that point. Do you want to make that edit and change?
Still vote for that sixteen? You gotta understand, oh, they don't move real fast. So you want to, where, where do you want to?
Well, do we want to add the other commissioners to this? Include all commissioners in this part of reimbursement? And do we want to give separate limits for what it is?
No. I, I think we just extend it to everybody and then leave the same limit unless somebody disagrees with that.
I wouldn't do that.
I would.
We'll just have to make that in the motion once we get on the vote. Any other questions on seventeen?
So we're, so we're not putting in the amount in the title, is that correct?
The amount is not in the title, no. The amount is in section one, the authorization.
What exact change, what would be the exact wording of the change? We wouldn't have really... We'll also have suspended.
What would the title change?
Change, change the title out there from chairman to commissioners. And that would be the same through the whole page, no matter where there is chairman. We would add commissioners instead of chairman. I think that would be the...
Okay.
The motion to make.
When I make that motion, if we pass R twenty-four zero-one-seven as amended.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Secretary, would you go vote?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Elwood?
Aye.
Chairman Holland?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawler?
Aye.
Secretary Treasurer Lidois, aye. Commissioner Plumley?
Aye.
Commissioner Straggs?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, a hundred percent agree.
All right, so R twenty-four dash zero-one-seven is passed. Vice Chair Elwood, do you want to make a motion and bring it back from the table?
Yeah, I would, I would like to make a motion, we reintroduce R twenty-four oh-one-six for discussion.
I'll second that.
And I would like to add under submission of payment five, subject to limitations put forth in zero-one-seven. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'll second that one. Um, this is just bringing it back to the table, so we'll just have to make a motion to pass it.
I'll make a motion to pass it as amended.
I'll second that one. We'll go on like there. Uh, Secretary, you want to make a vote on R twenty-four dash zero-one-six?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Elwood?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawler?
Aye.
Secretary Treasurer Lidois, aye. Commissioner Plumley?
Aye.
Commissioner Straggs?
Aye.
Mr. Chair?
All right, R twenty-four dash zero-one-six will get signed with the voice of it. All right, now you have me doing back and forth. I've got to get to where I'm at now. Um... Yep. Uh, the next, uh, item on the business is, uh, discussion on donation of private property. Um, I got an email from the district manager at Hy-Sid, uh, wanting to donate the green space that was originally known as having the driving range on it, being donated to the AMP Commission. So, that discussion comes up at this point right now.
Think about that. What would we do with?
That would give us an opportunity to have a park.
It, it would be there for the purpose of getting grant funding and applying for grant funding.
It's more like an extended hiking or possible frisbee golf, something, I don't know, something in the future. If not this, you know, it's a nature.
It's not a good space for a frisbee golf.
No, it's not a good place for driving.
It's a good place for a hiking trail.
Hiking.
There is a hiking trail there. Uh, let me just, and maybe I'm wrong. Shouldn't he donate that to the city and then the AMP parks is to donate? I mean...
The AMP law states that we can buy, sell and do with property and also build facilities on property. So it's not outside the realm of what we can do. Many other AMP commissions have parks, uh, buildings, convention centers. Um, even if you look down towards Little Rock, have parking garages where they charge for parking. And is that as a part of their revenue?
How would they know about transferring that? Is that a parcel of some kind or is that...
A hundred and forty-three acre pre-nick spread, pretty nice. It gives us an opportunity to show people that we're in addition to promoting the city, is that they have additional...
Do we have to pay an assessment or something on it for the property tags on it?
We're exempt from the property tag side of being underneath the government for it.
If I might. Yeah, yeah, I wish you would. I, I, this is news to me, so my brain is starting like...
Could you please?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Name for the audience.
Knowledge.
Thank you.
Larry Stantz. We were in, in search of court many ti- uh, three times, I believe, with Carroll County trying to tax the Greenbelt areas. Um, and thank goodness we won all of them and so therefore they're not taxed. You make improvements to it, I don't know. If it's city-owned, then it probably would not be taxed, although if they call it a park. I do, I'm, I don't dare practice law. Uh, that's bear hunting with sweat. Anyway, uh, uh, that has happened in the past and it has been, been a subject of that in the past. But my, my comment about that, about that driving range area down there, uh, that's a good place for somebody to get killed. That's... That's not a safe area. I walked down there and then walked back and I needed an ambulance.
I, well, we, I mapped out, with Hunter and I mapped out part of that trail down there. And I didn't think I was gonna make it up to the clubhouse, so I don't know.
Well, there's other, there's other entrances to it.
I know, I know, but we were mapping it out so that we knew, tried to foot that trail when we went down there. And we started over...
Haddock?
Haddock, yeah. Way up of Haddock and then we go through there and I said, I, I needed, you know, something to drink and something to eat. So we hiked up to the clubhouse and holy crap, we're doing the rest of this tomorrow. Because that was all I could think.
What might be nice was call it a nature garden or something natural to it.
I'm not against it. I just, would they leave that offer open for a while? I think we need to think about it.
Cool. There's still a bunch of hurdles to go through even at a motion to accept this park. Would still be the contingency on the contract and agreement being done. There's still a, a process to be done. That would have to be approved on by the end of the day.
I, I have a commit, uh, comment. I'm the Hy-Sid commission, uh, representative on this committee. I, I'm a board member of Hy-Sid and I've been on board, board commissioner for going on eight years. This has never come up at any meeting or any discussion that I've had with the chair, Larry, or the district manager. So, for us to give or transmit property, whether it's hilly or whatever, uh, I think this should go through the board of commissioners first. And then if the city or the planning commission were wanting to accept us and we were to transfer it, but this has never been on the agenda.
Well, I think it's one of the hurdles. I think, I think Bryce was not mistaken, put it on as a discussion item. We're not voting on it.
Yeah, I, I think the only thing that would be done, if there was anything to be done, would be a, a motion to... done, would be a, a motion to look at accepting the park, dependent on what comes out of the future parks that are there, so the contract or the agreement for the donation, I think a lot of that still has to be worked out, I think it would also go in front of the VOC before that happens. So I think this is the first step of the district manager asking if we would even take it as a donation, to then come back to you.
I, can we just?
Let me finish my comment, there's another parcel that appeared in rumors around the area, not ever brought up at an agenda meeting, on an agenda, announced the area down by car station five, to be used as a playground or a ballpark, I mean, a dog park or something. So a lot of these things are floating around, but they've never been on the VOC agenda, they've never been on the city council agenda, and this is the first time I've seen it on this agenda. So I think we're getting cart before the horse a little bit. And I would, our next work session is the nineteenth of August, I would like to put it on our agenda, that agenda, and discuss it further, and then come up for acceptance if that's the case later, for your agenda or the city council.
Let me bring up one other thing. We're not in a position tonight to vote on it, I think it's a position tonight to think about it. But could we even accept it before November first anyway?
Because there's no requirement for an A and P commission to have to have a tax to operate. They could technically get funding from the city as, as direct funding, they could get funding from other places, have ways to generate revenue based on being there, so there's no requirement in the park to have a tax to have an A and P commission.
No, but I just think it sounds, it almost seems like to me it'd be better to wait and see if, if the tax passes before we start accepting property, is it?
You could still fundraise as an A and P commission.
We could, but.
You could still fundraise as an A and P commission.
I, I think it's, I think it's an interesting proposition, but I think it needs some more thought.
So I think the, the process for this being the email that was sent to me about this, would be the part of if we would be interested or not in the donation, to then go back and go through the stuff. If we, if we say yes, we would be interested in what that would do, then, then that process would take place. If we say that we did not want it, then there's nothing else to go, there's no VOC to go from, there's nothing, there's no other discussion to have, so I think the question is, would we be interested in looking at it and then there?
I think we'd be interested in looking at it.
I think that's the only thing.
I don't, I don't think we'd be interested in rejecting it at this point, nor accepting it at this point, but it's something, because it's brand new, you know, hadn't even occurred to me, but it's something that'd be nice to have, it's important in the future. Should we just send it back a, kind of a response, if we have to vote on it, fine, if we don't have to vote on it.
I would say we.
Then we'd be interested in exploring this idea further.
Okay, I have, I have a question.
There you go.
I have a question. All right, and the second set in line, it says that they'd like to donate the green space at the country club for, to use for grant money. Would you please explain what that grant money is?
The grant money is, there's a lot of recreational grant money in the state available to get. There are some organizations that can get it, there's some that can't, and so since we're a part of the city umbrella part, we can get grant money for it. So applying for those grants, I, I think what this is going to come out to be, if it's approved by the VOC board and everywhere else, I think that the contingency is going to be that if the property is donated to the A and P, that there's a certain set of timeframe met, that something is done with a grant and something is completed in the park area. And if not, this property would go back to the SED, and that's what I would, it's not something that we would take as a donation and keep forever and do nothing with. I, I think that part needs to be very clear, that if there's not something done or we can't get a grant for it, that this would go back.
And the A and P can get grants where HISET can't.
We even got a grant for the building, the trail in the first place, and not for the city.
Right.
I'm going to ask Tyler, because he's the expert on that whole area, because doesn't there have to be some mowing and so forth, taking care of that place? We don't have any money to do that, it was very difficult for you all to do it, right?
Yes, yeah, the, I'm just going to reference from what I know is, the amount of money that we put into maintenance did not cover the amount that the range brought in with regulations.
You have a less love going down there.
It's a lot of time, maintenance.
We had snake bites, some employees, we had a lot of problems.
Let alone just, we, whenever we got there, we had to come down from the top, so, and it's gravel, switchback, gravel with mowers, even if they have good brakes, they aren't going to stop on gravel. And the stuff that you can't mow with the mowers is weed eating, and you're sitting on a very steep incline, and it isn't just, let's go knock this out in four hours, it's going to be two days of weed eating, one day of mowing. So if you have a maintenance crew that you hire, they better be ready for it, because that's how we lost a lot of our employees, is they'd go down there and it's.
Tyler, it's a, it's a green space, could we not maintain the old driving range part of it and the trail down, which is halfway flat top, and let the rest of it go back to nature?
Well, I would want to back up to the discussion of what are we looking at? If you're just wanting a walking, a hiking trail? Yeah, you, well, yeah, but everybody, you brought up a pollinator garden, the only way you can put a pollinator garden in there is if you come in from Haddock, you don't want people walking down from the country club or Thunderbird, it's pretty dangerous to get down all the way to the pollinator garden, let alone setting up stuff for a pollinator garden. If you want to bring in equipment to support the ground, you have to come in for a pretty flat area.
Let me add to that, and I don't think that any of these grants are going to ask for fifteen or twenty thousand dollars to put a trail in, the idea of this is to go after some of the larger grants for work to actually be done there. I don't think it's for just a trail, I think there would have to be a plan developed and made for this, it's going to need some time to do, and really, the, the lowest part of that is actually coming in on Wild Turkey, the, the property goes all the way to Wild Turkey, and you would have to develop something in there to, to make easier access into that area. And so it, it would take a substantial amount of money.
It would take much, yeah, our grant, I think, was for the trails, was like twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars, that would take substantially more than that, and we'd have to have some committee that came up with a plan for adding it.
Sheriff, I think, as I said, we got the cart before the horse, I would move that we table this and tell the SED, HISET board of commissioners, discusses this as to whether they're willing to donate us in the first place.
Well, right now, I think all we're being asked aside is whether we should be interested in it.
I, I think if we tabled it and we, or turned it down, I think what would happen is there would be no discussion to happen in the VOC at that point. The question right now is, do we want to look at the consideration of taking a donation? If we do, then this would be sent back as, yes, we would be interested, we need to find out what those details are, and it would then appear back in the VOC and then come back to us here to then make an actual vote on accepting the donation.
Mr. Chairman, if it was a flat, fairly flat surface, I would say, let's do that. This is the tundra of Alaska multiplied, and that's why the consultants had shut it down. We had injuries down there, we had snake bites, we had difficulty, as Tyler just brought up, you cannot maintain it, so what would we do as an A and P commission to make that a viable project for grants?
A, a, a plan would have to be developed for that to do it.
Bulldoze it and make it?
No, no.
They would have to do some, some additional road or maintenance into the location that would make it more effective.
You could make a nature trail, you could, I'm, we're talking about not our money, we're talking about a plan to apply for a grant to develop a piece of property, it's got to be developed the way it is, and it's terraced.
It's a trail right across the land, we, I was on a committee to look at it.
You could, you're thinking too small, I'm not talking about just a trail, if we wanted to apply for, if we don't get a grant, we couldn't do anything with it. Apply for a grant, we could put rows of, rows of trees, we could have a bike trail, we could have.
Outside of the hiking trail, I think the bike, the mountain bike trail would be about the only other option where at least you would have a space to drop off and then shuttle, like they could drive, ride, ride their bike back up the road or something, or shuttle, drop a car off and shuttle back up, you'd at least have a spot at the top of the hill and bottom of the hill.
I don't think the, the question tonight is about what that development would be or, or to put in the grant, I, I think this is the first state of if we want to even consider it, I think that is what we have to give an answer to, and then it would go back to the VOC.
I think the answer is, we're not, we're not going to reject it, we just want to look at it.
Right, I just want to put this before you, Kelly, Kelly Steeple, I just wanted to put this before you, this is exactly the kind of project that the Waltons would support and jump in on, there was some property that was donated to them in Bella Vista, they hired the people from Whistler, is that Utah, I don't know, and they created what is called the Gravity Zone, and it has twenty or so different trails that all are different levels, green, black, whatever, and then a little centralized area, so they gather and then they can splinter out and do this thing. We are in the mountain bike capital of the world, and that would be a great way to bring people here if you had something like that.
And I agree, but would it, are we too far away from?
No, they're, they're busy in Eureka right now, and they just did all of that work out there, we're bridging the gap.
The high school had a mountain bike team.
Well, again, we're not voting to reject it, we're not voting to accept it, we're voting to consider it, but.
Mr. Chairman, I made a motion to table the discussion for later time, but I don't know if this is.
We have, we have a motion to table it, you made a motion.
I think that we need a motion to, I'm not sure how to word it, but to, to make a motion to consider accepting.
Wait a minute, I made a motion to table, we need either a second or we don't need a second, and then we'll go on to her motion.
There's no second.
I haven't heard a second for it, I have not heard a second for your motion.
Anybody stuck?
So back to your motion.
Somebody want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we send back a response that we're interested in further exploration of the idea.
I second that.
We have a first and a second. Secretary, you want to take a vote on that?
Commissioner Brown?
No.
Commissioner Elwood?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland, I mean Chairman Holland.
Uh, aye.
Vice Chair Lawler?
Aye.
Secretary of Treasury Lottowitz, aye. Commissioner Plumley?
Aye.
Commissioner Stradens?
Aye.
One, no, pass.
So we'll, we'll I guess let me clarify that part is we're going to send a letter back. Yeah.
We want to consider the exploration.
Consider it and let it go back to, with, waiting for more details from the governor.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question, if you send a letter to Mr. Figgins saying we would like to pursue this further, does it be the board of commissioners, which is the governing body of the HISET, have to approve that transfer of land?
I, I would. Yeah, that would be a question there, but we do have Larry Stantz here, and Larry, I would, I would suggest this, is that at the next meeting, if y'all would like me to come to that meeting and, and we talk about that, I would, I would definitely do it.
We can get that on the agenda, I think, but I think to answer your question, we would have to.
I can't imagine that the district manager has the right to be given. No.
No, he doesn't. Five members have elected to have the right to sell land and transfer land, it's not the, not the.
That's your problem, it's not our problem.
Well, that's why the representative of HISET, because I want to protect HISET's interest as well.
I know.
Thank you.
I know.
All right, moving on to
Contracting a chamber for advertising.
Yeah, contracting with the Chamber of Commerce for advertising, there's not really a title to put for this, since it is just a contract for it, I guess let me give some details to that. This has to do with the fund guide for September and October issue that I met with Rich, and Rich asked if we wanted to take some of their ad space for the SED while they were cutting budgets in the SED. And so that's what brings us to this point right now, if we want to take a third of that page out of the fund guide. Secretary, you know what the amounts were?
Well, it's five hundred and twenty-two dollars was the monthly for the fund guide, so the proposal was that the A and P would pay one-third of it, that we would advertise additional information, and HISET would only do two-thirds, at which point that would help them reduce their budget for the expenses, and would give the A and P an opportunity to really advertise more and deeper for the, the city and the HISET.
Any questions or comments?
I would be for this because I don't think with the lawsuit that we have from ten years ago, we're severely limited on advertising, and we've lost a lot of sales, a hole due to that, we lost a lot of visitors due to that, and Eureka does a really good job in the paper and Fund Guide publishers, so I think this is a third goodbye for our money that we've been talking about.
I think it would give us an opportunity to put some advertising out in place before the vote happens, and, and be able to use it as showing what we can do with money, and how we can improve on that once the tax passes, so. Can you remind me the amount that we would actually pay in September and October? If we did this?
One hundred and seventy-four.
Thank you.
What was it, one hundred and seventy-four?
That'd be two months, September and October, that's what we'd do, be a third of the page of the fund guide. Any other questions? Comments? We would have to have a motion to accept this advertising agreement if we were going to do it.
Okay, I'm making a motion that we accept the HISET agreement.
I'll second it.
Two-thirds, one-third.
It'd be the one-third, two months. You seconded it? Secretary, you want to take a vote?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Elwood?
Aye.
Chairman Holland?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawler?
Aye.
Secretary of Treasury Lottowitz, aye. Commissioner Plumley?
Aye.
Commissioner Stradens?
Aye.
We'll sign that and put it down for September, October as the fund guide. Moving on to request the city council to change city ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero two zero. This is this has to do with, when I'm looking in there for how and who would pay this A and P tax, we have a lot of Airbnbs that have downed business licenses, they've done cups, we have definitely event places that rent locations. At this point in time, there is not either business licenses described for some of these, and some of these would be A and P tax locations, and the A and P taxes put out in connection with the type of business license that would have that type of tax, so an A and P permit doesn't go to everybody, it doesn't go to Dollar General over here, they're not collecting any A and P tax, they have nothing in tax part four. This would add those changes to that business license ordinance to categorize some of the ones that are there, the examples go a little bit farther than the categories that we would technically put, but it was on track with what the SED currently has. The SED currently has a campground, they collect sales tax for it, they also collect Arkansas tourism tax, and so they would definitely be a candidate to collect an A and P tax, of which they don't have a business license right now. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
My question would be if, if Larry Stantz, if, if you impose a tax on the use of the campground, is the next step imposed? is the next step imposing a tax on the use of the swimming pool by guests from the Airbnbs?
You can impose a tax on the Airbnbs. They're short-term rentals like a campground.
Okay.
Under the, the state law for the tax itself, it talks about all hotels, motels, bed and breakfast, short-term rentals, campgrounds, RV parks. It does include all of those into the AMP tax. So it is, it is a user's tax. So people coming to the campground would pay a user's tax on that. They're, they're treated the same as like an Airbnb would be. They would have the same short-term rental accommodations that, that others would.
Okay, well, the guest pays, pays for the, the use of the pool and stuff. But.
The pool itself doesn't fall under the category of the SRT.
Okay. All right, that's my question.
Yep.
The campground manager, in this case of Holiday Island, would collect that three percent for the administration of HIC and send it on to the AMP administration. Just like all the other SRTs.
Yep. It, it's just to properly put it in there now and wait till after that and that come up and be there. Because the, the tax side of that does require enforcement. If there's a location that would be for that and doesn't have one, it requires enforcement to happen. It's not a, it's not an option. And I guess we see some of that right now with different things that there's an option to enforce or how they go about enforcement today, you wouldn't have any option but to enforce it.
I've had an RV for about five years, a couple of RVs that we traveled all over the country. If it was fifty bucks, you just paid fifty bucks a night. If it was seventy dollars, you paid seventy. We didn't know what happened after that, you know, was it city tax or AMP tax or whatever? But they kept going out by no doubt. So I don't think the people that are using the campground, it's not a, it's an item for them.
Look, user tax can be added on top of what they're going to pay. It can be also baked into the price. I have restaurants. We see that comment with bars. We add the tax into the price that we sell alcohol for. If we are getting something for five bucks, you're going to pay five bucks. We have to go back into the park and do the tax control. Okay. There are, there are multiple ways to do that.
I think this is what we have to emphasize when we have our board. You know, that there's people coming in like me from Holiday Island that is a court lawyer. And I'm going to pay that seventy dollars a night for an RV. But it's included in all the other taxes, sales tax, the excise tax, so forth. But, you know, to make them aware of that John Public who lives here in Holiday Island is not paying for a campground from California, Oklahoma, somewhere there. That's very, very important. And I know we're going to keep camera going.
Any other comments or questions about the request for change on the city ordinance?
Was the campground, if the visitors to the campground considered as far as how much we might gain starting next March? It was not?
Not added into that. No, so far the only figure that we did when it was the AMP ad hoc committee was purely on the number of Airbnb locations. In fact, I don't even think we included at that time the timeshares in that number. So the timeshares were not added in that. The campground was not into that either.
I'll make a motion that we improve it up.
I'll second it.
We have a first and a second?
And what's your all of the system?
Secretary, you want to take a vote on that?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Elwood?
Aye.
Chair?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawler?
Aye.
Secretary Treasurer Lottowex?
Aye.
Commissioner Plumley?
Aye.
Commissioner Scruggins?
Aye.
Chairman, if you vote yes.
We're not off to the city council. Moving on to discussion on operating with HIC. Brought in Larry Stamps and asked him to come tonight so we can ask some questions hopefully. Which other thing? So all of you got, uh, chapter five. That was the name. There are questions across the board. And this has to do with the grant funding that was put in place for even the barbecue contest there on some of these locations being public, private, semi-private. And this event is going on, what we believe right now being considered private, I guess, or public or semi-private, I guess, is the question that sits in place that we're trying to figure out what the answer is.
I read through these and. What were they thinking? That's a long time. I, I guess I don't understand the question. What it were.
Well, the question is, we're trying to figure out exactly what to do and, and what do we approve? At this point right now, we approved grant funding for an event to take place at the sports complex. And the rules in the SIB does not list that as that is a doable event. I guess it's a question that's in place.
It lists the barn, the ballroom, the island room, and some other property, right?
Randy answered a question.
Yeah.
Randy, you're off. Twenty-four bucks came in.
Yep.
I've read through these regulations and regulation referring to is five dash thirty-one, which merely addresses the amenities. And according to five thirty-one, all amenities are private unless otherwise changed by regulation by the Board of Commissioners. So what it's saying is all of our amenities are private, even though we know that the, it's also listed, I believe in later on in five thirty-eight, that the golf course, the clubhouse, those are semi-private. And semi-private has been deemed as any of those private facilities that cannot be maintained without the help of public money. Simple as that. Or they cannot be maintained at the current level they are without the public being able to pay fees to get in. Back to five thirty-one, it says all amenities are private, even though, and must be changed by the board. I couldn't find anywhere where the board had changed anything by regulation. But if you go to five thirty-eight, which dictates all of the amenities, there are prices structures for all of these semi-private facilities. So I don't know where there's any discussion about whether or not these can be used because according to five thirty-eight, the price of the amenities, there is a price line in there for non-residents or non-property owners. So I, I, I don't see anywhere where it says you can't have a barbecue at the, uh, pavilion because we have pricing in it, which implies it's semi-private. Now, does the board need to go back and actually make, change the regulation and, and list all of these as being semi-private facilities? It probably could, but it's clearly covered under the amenity cost in five thirty-eight, which clearly is implying those are all semi-private, not private. The only thing that is deemed private and still is, is the swimming pool. Everything else is semi-private.
Question?
And ask me, because the lifeguard probably.
Well, there's a couple of issues. First is the insurance itself. And not having a lifeguard. And I don't know that we want to go down that road. I think we ought to just leave it private the way it is. Everything else, though, I think eventually the HIC board may need to say, all of the things that we have listed in the amenities that are for non-property owners, maybe we should declare those semi-private. Because they couldn't function without being private. The ballroom, if it's private, and there's some things in there. I've heard discussions before about this seventy percent rule.
Right.
Which if you read through it, it's very clear. If, that there's a group A, a group B, and a group C. The seventy percent rule came as a discount to say at the ballroom function, if it was seventy percent homeowners or property owners, they would get a reduced rate.
Like do your Z.
Yes. If it's more than seventy percent, then they pay a higher rate. That is the only difference between, on the seventy percent when you read through the regulation. It wasn't to say that you have to have seventy percent. There was nothing like that. It's merely of how we're charging the fee. Is it seventy percent home? And some of those referred to, um, these little meeting rooms in the clubhouse and stuff. And there's some things that maybe we could clean up in the regulation of minimum people. You gotta have five people minimums. I don't know why. He and I just want to go play chess. Can't we rent the room? But back to five thirty-one, I don't know that we need to, as far as the, this group, I don't know that it affects anything.
Well, I appreciate Randy's, uh, looking at that and I agree. One of the things we need to do, and Kelly and Larry are here and others, we need to get more people to come and have fun in Holiday Island. And the Go Party coming up, I think it's September seventh. Peggy, you do a great job of advertising. The Friday newsletter is up. We've got a couple of big, big events coming up. And we need hundreds of people there. We need dozens and dozens of people. I don't care whether they're from Holiday Island or elsewhere. But if they're coming to enjoy our, our island and maybe they'll buy a house here. Maybe they'll rent a house. Maybe they'll go to one of Mike's SRTs. They probably will if they're here for more than a night or two. And that's what's been a little bit lacking. It hasn't been lacking, but we haven't been pushing it like we should. And I think this commission that we're on, and I'm proud to be on it, is very important to push that. And if we can, as a SIB, that's why working with HIC, we don't have to charge the whale out of these things. We can make it so a person can make a profit or a group, you know, the bass fisherman or whoever it is come in a car show. What a great thing. You know, I'm a car guy and I can't afford to keep up an old car anymore. But I, I would love to see Corvettes and everything over at the barn. And that's what's going to happen. We're going to have dozens and dozens, maybe several hundred people there. So could we work with HIC and clarify and, and work with the things that Randy just brought up? Now, there are pages and pages, Bryce, you brought up that you noticed that we need, some of these regulations that we let go for quite a while and they need renewal. And I think the district manager has a plan. I think it's talked to Larry about that. So what I want to do, though, and rewrite a regulation, whether it's private, semi-private, the fee that we charge, make it affordable and invite, make Holiday Island an inviting place to be.
I have a question for Randy. On that seventy percent, the discount, for example, we booked it for Rotary and I was told to pay $500 for the.
That is the discounted rate for the bowling. If it's more than seventy or less than seventy percent homeowners, it goes to six ninety-five.
So the, the discount is what you're saying here on the chart is what it says homeowners versus.
Property owners.
Property owners.
Some events, we're going to have trouble making that determination.
No, I think if it's an error, I would go with a lower number.
But I mean, things like.
A lower rate.
Things like what we're doing in October, things like what we're doing in. Did I misunderstand what you said? A difference from property owners and homeowners? They're one in the same.
Yeah, I was saying non, non property versus property owners on those, that table.
Yeah, it, it just wasn't clear if we're giving grant money to an event to operate somewhere, the question needed to be asked just to make sure that it's clear that it is going, that it is usable. Because there are parts of it in there that make it sound in a way that it could be private, cut off from everything.
It is somewhat contradictory, but I think they, the amenities in five thirty-eight supersede the previous one that says they're all private. Some point in time, when they made the golf course public, they had to, someone had to have called out that this is no longer private.
Come. Anybody else?
I still agree with you. Maybe HIC needs to update the regulation and say, all of these things listed in five thirty-eight as non-property owner amenities are now semi-private.
Can that be put on the agenda for your workshop or your meeting?
Sure, Larry can put that out, no problem.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I, I read these and I would not have any problem sleeping tonight.
Anybody else have any other questions?
So are there other ways that we could look at operating with HIC other than what's the amenity and so forth? Or did you have other things you wanted to mention, anybody?
I, I don't think there is, there's much yet still looking at what, what we can do and what we can't do and, and doing. But one of them that definitely came up was bringing events in. Where were they going to hold that? And really, the only place to hold events is on SIB property. They have the property for it. They have the locations for it. And then the clarification of being able to get tourists to those places, I think is the key part since we are the focus on tourism. Homeowners obviously get to come and enjoy the same thing, but the focus is to get tourism here also.
I have a suggestion, one that I mentioned earlier tonight about the dog park or a playground or something else. Whatever kind of, uh, place you'd like to organize and get grant money for. What I would suggest, if you have a location for that, is you write a letter to the district manager and the chair of Mr. Stamps of HIC and bring that up in a meeting. That we, as the AMP commission, would like to apply for grant for XYZ lots, green space, and turn it into a whatever. And we'd like your consideration to donate that to the city and AMP rather than the way we get it. It seems like backwards way to go.
Any more questions or comments on the last document?
We don't want to use the driving. Do what? People be losing their dogs.
Great day.
They have a dog, you have to bring him back up to him. The dog you don't like, you didn't leave him down there because he ate.
All right. If there's no more discussion on that, we'll move on to discussion certified certificate of original document. Secretary Treasurer, I mean, what you talk on this one, what it's for, how it's doing with the paperwork that's going?
Okay. We have to certify that the minutes are correct. And because after a timeframe, we have to keep them. There's a long timeframe. And we want to make sure that ten years ago, ten years ago, they'll know that it was certified, it was actual, it was right. So it's just following the law. And it has nothing to do, I mean, it would be, I would fill it out and Bryce would sign it and it would be attached to the minutes. And that just proves that someone else looked at them and it was.
This is, do we need to take action on it or is this just for information?
I think if we just make a motion that we're really, yeah, it's, it's not. The only other way to do it is if we didn't use it, you have to keep the paper version of it. Definitely. So this gives you the option to go to the digital backup and digital copy of it, but it is a certified copy of that original. I don't think we have to do it, but if you want to make a motion on it, if we use that form, then.
Oh, I don't mind. I just didn't, I figured that was just informational because we kind of have to do it.
If, if we're going to go to the digital, yeah.
You need a motion, I make a motion.
If we're going to do a motion, let's just go ahead and I'll, I'll second that and we'll just go on with it. You want to do, Secretary, the vote?
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Elwood?
Aye.
Chairman Lawler?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lawler?
Aye.
Secretary Treasurer Lottowex?
Aye.
Commissioner Plumley?
Aye.
I'm having trouble.
I'm sorry, yes.
Commissioner Scruggins?
Aye.
All in favor, Chairman?
So we'll just use that document and start copying that. We're going to start doing it. Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're going to go that way, so we'll go with it. Next item is discussion on Holiday Island marketing tagline. Secretary, this kind of in your category again, if you want to.
We're looking to see, we, you know, when Tom Dees had it, it was come with the quietest beautiful. And then we used, um, visit, stay and play, visit, play and stay. And so we need some sort of a tagline for the AMP to promote Holiday Island. And so, we need some sort of a tagline for the AMP to promote Holiday Island. So, we're just asking everyone to think about what we should use. You know, someone said like discover peace, you know, it's relaxation. You know, or most of the AMPs use discover or explore, so we're looking for something, you know, different. Somebody said, we're almost like a melting pot because people come from all over. So, anybody have any suggestions of a tagline?
Is it too simple to say discover Holiday Island? Is that what you want people to do? May I pass these out?
Yes, please.
You just want us to like email suggestions?
I think that would be a great idea. Kelly has two logos on her cup that we might want to consider too.
Thank you.
One is... Kelly, why don't you tell us what...
I'll put Holiday Island, the city where we live to play.
Kelly, there's a problem.
I know, that one's on here.
What goes in there? I know what goes in there, I just thought it would come already.
Oh, that's not a good question.
That's true.
I don't know why, I have a bunch of these, I lose them all the time. I think I leave them on the beer can and throw them away.
So, I guess the request is, you know, to our audience and to our people, we'll send in some ideas of how...
Run a contest.
Yeah.
Larry's putting up the prize money. 50 cents.
Well, the...
I'll match that.
We've got a lot that can do.
Really? Win a free one.
The photograph contest made 173 photos, so we'll try a contest for a tagline.
We'll award a membership lock. Membership lock, okay. You can tell when you've been here a while.
No, no other discussion on the tagline. We'll make something.
Okay, we're having a contest. The recommendation was having a contest, so that's what's, Lawler can do that.
No more discussion on that, then we'll just close that part, and we'll go right on to public comments. Anybody have any public comments?
Do you have any public comments?
Not yet, I'm going to let them go first if they had it. Because it is open, but there are not any right now. If there aren't any, it's been open now for the last two items to take questions, and there are not any questions right now. So, if there's any public comments from the audience here, and if there aren't any submitted, then we can go on to Commissioner's comments.
I have a question on Hypro, and they're such a good organization, I'm glad to support it over the years with a little money. But I understand that some of the signs that are going to be put up on September 19th, we have a first forum, trying to sell this for November 5th. I have boxes of things that go on the ground, sign stakes I guess, and I've asked three or four people from the Hypro if I can use those, if they need to use them. What is the plan going forward between this commission and trying to sell this on November 5th and getting the signs out and getting advertising and so forth? I'm sort of at a loss for, maybe it was discussed at the last meeting.
All that's been handed over to the committee that they created for the election of the ballot, and so they are handling all of it. We can't use any public dollars for the ballot issue.
But we'll use our time.
You can definitely use your time. You don't lose any of your sign for being on the commission, so...
They have formed a Holiday Island Short-Term Rental Committee, and they have filed for authorization to use it. They've opened up a bank account, and they'll be buying the signs to...
When are some of these things going to start happening?
I think it's in the process of them signing up, from what I understand, they've done that, so I think the rest of it would start to show up next.
Are the signs going to be credited by the company?
Vern's handling, Vern's handling is all of that.
So, they're doing it all?
We can't.
No, we can't do that.
We can't do anything with any dollars or anything here.
Are they using money left over from their funds there?
You'll have to address those questions, I think, to Vern?
Yep.
And Donna Pitner, and Diane, Dwayne Paulson. Okay, that's the committee.
Well, is it, Peggy, is it you and Bryce that know what they're doing, what we can look forward to? I'm a little bit concerned.
They've been doing it. I talked to Vern probably two weeks ago, and they were in the process of getting the committee all set up. And outside of that, I don't have anything else to say.
No, I think...
You could probably ask if anybody out there is... You could probably ask if anyone out there is part of that. Maybe you could talk to them.
Chair, ask if there's anybody in the audience that's familiar with what they may be doing at the Hypro to get us listening for November 5th. Like, for instance, on September 19th, if we have a 6:00 PM meeting, if I'm not allowed to do anything about it, if I go there, will there be zero people?
They're supposed to go there, they're supposed to have handouts. That's what I'm saying, they've been working on that. They're going to use some of the handouts like that, you know, we suggested.
Maybe we get Vern invited to come to the next meeting. That would be before the next, before the next public meeting that happens, from the 18th or 19th. I can't remember which one that was. But we do have one more. It is the 19th. So, we still have one more meeting, regular meeting before that.
One time like that, the first Monday in September is local.
Yep, we were going to recommend a Tuesday meeting when we got to the scheduling.
Is there any other Commissioner comments?
Okay, last question. When do we decide who's going to be speaking at the meeting on September 16th?
That'll be in the next regular meeting, when we cover all what we're going to talk about together. Well, I think we have to figure out what that is, because it's Monday is the second, is the first Monday, and that's a holiday, so we're going to have to change it to a different date for it.
No, it doesn't work for the next Monday. We're hoping the next Tuesday, September 3rd. Instead of Monday, that week.
We don't even, we've talked about scheduling.
How many people are actually going to be going there to come to the...
I can't.
That answered that problem. Tuesday's probably the one.
Should we decide that today?
Yeah, we're going to have to in this scheduling that we can talk about right now for September.
We can do it at a time.
August 3rd, September 3rd.
It's 6:00 PM.
Fine with that.
Tuesday 3rd, 6:00 PM.
Could we have the Hypro people here to...
I would invite, I'll invite them. And they're no longer Hypro, they're Holiday Island Short-Term Tax Committee.
You're going to ask them to come?
Yes.
Last question of the commissioners. Have you talked to anybody, neighbors, friends, coworkers, whatever, about what we're doing here? And have you received any feedback, plus or less?
Everybody had a question, they're pretty positive.
For the calendar.
And same here.
Mine are about the same. I got that one to steal it, just kind of, but he's been like that with anything changed, he's kind of, no, 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 and then we do the change anyway, it's like, okay, it worked out. So, he's kind of, he'll roll with punches. He's like Mike Tyson, you knock him down, but he'll get back up.
I think...
That too. He did that one time, he'd get my head off.
Remind new people to register the vote. That's kind of pretty soon. Thank you.
All right. We got the scheduling done. We don't have anything else on there. We're at the end of it.
We should do a adjournment.
Have a motion. And a second. All in favor? I guess. Nope, not going to do that one. The adjournment. Nope. No, that one.